Call the Finance Committee to order. Roll call, please.
Alderman Wesley?
Here.
Alderman Police?
Here.
Alderman Lewitan?
Here.
Alderman Shockey?
Here.
Alderman Cadella?
Here.
Alderman Winger? Alderman Coles?
Here.
Alderman Knight?
Here.
Yeah, I also need approval of the minutes for November 13th, 2008.
Second.
Second, what a comment.
Comment?
On the back, item three, items we can consider future meetings, B, I believe. It could be a typing error. It should be mailed on wheels, not mailed.
Oh, okay, we'll correct that.
Okay.
Any other questions on the minutes? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Polls? Oh, okay. Report and recommendation fiscal year 2008 audit report. As you guys got in your packet, we did get the audit report done. If you want to just give us a brief overview of the audit report, what you found in... I'll tell you one thing, I think it was a very good audit report. It was a few errors, but overall, I think it was really good. If you want to give us overview on it, that would be nice.
Thank you Chairman Wesley. To begin, we do have Lou Harrison here from Sickitt. She is the partner in charge of our audit. I'll turn it over to him just to give a brief synopsis of the audit, and then we'll get on to the few slides that I prepared for you.
Could you just move that planter all the way for we could see him? Thank you.
I will be brief. I'll direct your attention in the audited financial statements of the comprehensive annual financial report, pages one and two. Page one has, you'll recognize it has the... It's on our firm letterhead. Everybody chance to get there. And this is our opinion. It is the, really the only document in this report that really belongs to the auditors. The financial statements, the management's discussion, analysis, the letter of transmittal, the stat section are all the representations of city and management. And we are retained on an annual basis to audit the financial statements, look at the MDA and the stat section, and then give you our opinion as to whether or not we believe the financial statements are fair and reasonable in that they present the results of your operations, namely your balance sheet, or statement of net assets as we call it now, and the results for the year, your statement of activities, and your statements of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance, and then give you our opinion as to whether or not we believe those statements are fair, reasonable, and are free of any material misstatement. In other words, they're basically correct. And we have given that opinion. It basically starts on page one, which says we've done the audit in accordance with what the standards were required to. And in our opinion, your statements are fair and reasonable, and are free of material misstatement. It's the highest level of assurance that you can get from an independent CPA. So with that, I'll be glad to stop and ask if anybody has any questions about that or any other matters that they may have noted.
Anyone have any questions on the audit report? No, I guess not. Okay, I guess not.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you having me here.
Very good job. Well done with your company. Thank you. Okay. Our next item on the agenda will be report and recommendation for 2008 property tax levy.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Before you get into that, it would be appropriate to have a motion from the committee recommending the city council to accept the audit report.
Okay, I'll back up then. I obtain a motion to accept the audit report, 2008 audit report.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any polls? Motion carries. Thank you. You want to take us on the property tax levy? I know you got a presentation, I believe.
Thank you again Chairman Wesley. As required by the county, we do need to pass the property tax levy and have it filed with the county before the final Tuesday of every calendar year. So with that in mind, here is our proposed property tax levy for the fiscal year ending... The property tax levy for 2008, since they're always collected in arrears, you always pay property taxes for the year previous. The county does often revise them down based upon CPI or other factors. So you know, this is the proposed, and the county revises it accordingly. There's a brief five-year history of actual property tax levies, and with the current one being the proposed tax levy. You can see it does drop quite a bit there. The primary reason for the drop is the fact that the general obligation bonds that the city had at one time came off the books, and the tax rate fell accordingly once those items came off the books. This is a breakdown of the property tax levy, how it's being proposed. The only caveat to giving, putting into these categories is that you can't... If you levy an amount, you have to be sure you spend that amount. Otherwise, you have to reclassify it with the county, because then they'll say, well, you're levying more money than you actually spent. So the numbers for audit, FICA, IMRF, TORT, which is legal litigation, are lower than the actual cost of those projects, just to be on the safe side so that we don't overshoot ourselves and have to deal with that on the back end at the end of the year with the county. And the property taxes are based upon the assessed valuation for your house, as you're all aware. And this is a history, looking back, of the equalized assessed valuation for the city of Wooddale. You can see it does steadily go up. And I know we did have the assessor out here a couple of months ago and was talking about why it's still going up, even though home values have come down and the housing market has fallen. So next year will be interesting to see if it does trend down a little bit or continues to trend up. But these were the actuals for the last few years. This is the history of the property tax collections for Wooddale. Again, it's the same on the first chart. They do drop in '03, '04, and '05 with the general obligation bonds coming off the books, and that particular levy coming off of your tax bills. And then with the increase in the equalized assessed valuation, the property taxes have began going up, just based upon the home values here in town. And I believe that is the last slide.
So I believe we need a motion is to approve the tax levy?
We do, yes.
Okay, I obtain a motion to approve the tax levy, 2008 property tax levy. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Oh, wait, can we have a discussion on it?
I guess. Questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
Mr. Wilson, I believe the equalization tax this year for 2008 to be paid in 2009 has gone up in Wooddale. That the majority of the people are going to be receiving equalization rates that are higher than last year. I've received mine, and it is higher than last year. I don't believe, therefore, we need any increase, because the equalization rate will cause more money to be assessed to all the homeowners as it is. And I think you did this probably before the tax bills went... The tax assessments went out. So you were not aware of the assessments going up. So the equalization, the value of homes for equalized assessment has gone up in Wooddale for this year. As you mentioned, Chris... Was it Chris King, right? Who was here? The assessor, Chris King? Kane, I'm sorry, I wanted to pronounce his name right. Chris Kane pointed out that there's a trailing effect, that you're taking a five-year average. So as rates have been going up for the last five years, we're now at the pinnacle year in the trail. And from here, we may go down as the assessments of the property go down. But right now, for this year, we're still following the increased trail, not the decreasing trail. I believe that we can live without any increase in the real estate taxes.
Go ahead.
Therefore, I'd vote no for any increase in taxes.
The only thing you have to be mindful in this situation is, since we are tax capped, only being allowed to increase the tax rate by 5% each year. Last year, what we presented was a 5% increase. The county then, through their adjustments, actually decreased that rate to 4.1%. So right there, we lost almost a full percent of increase that we could have had had the CPI been higher, the assessed valuations have been higher. So we're chasing a point there. If we don't raise it at all this year, we're 6% behind where we could have been. And then depending next year, if the assessed valuation doesn't go up or doesn't go down, we could be anywhere from, obviously, that base of six up to 11% behind of where we could have been in property taxes. You know, our rate is already continuing to trend downward. If we don't raise it, it's going to continue to lower. Your tax bill's still going to go up, because the schools need to get their money. They're going to get their money regardless of the assessed valuation, which is what Assessor Kane had said when he was here. I mean, it's obviously your call, but we're, you know, chasing a point just from last year. We'll be chasing six points after this year, unless you want to have a truth in taxation hearing to raise it above 5% in a future year to get the levy amount up. Because if we don't raise the amount, you know, if we don't raise the percentage, we're actually going to levy a lesser amount and have less money in the general fund when we come to budget season. So if you want to live with that, that's fine, but I...
May I respond?
Mr. Lewitan?
I don't think that the assessments... I don't think the actual dollars are going to drop, because the assessments are higher. So the same percentage of taxation is going to be on a higher average value on the house. So if you raise the assessment, you're giving a double whammy. You're raising the tax base, and you're raising the tax amount. This last report from the Commerce Commission showed that unemployment is the highest in 26 years. And next year is projected to be the highest foreclosure rate in the history of the United States. I think at this time, tax relief is more appropriate for homeowners than tax increase. And I see other things going on in the city that will bring on money stream that will offset anything that you're worried about. But basically, I don't think that the taxpayer in this city is going to see any decrease in his taxes by us not raising the taxes. The taxes are still going to go up, because the tax valuation of the property has gone up. And I've seen the assessments. These aren't the bills, but these are the assessments. The assessments that have gone out already are increased over last year. The property values are up. And I point that out to everybody here. Those people who own property will be paying more taxes just because the valuation of the property has gone up. Thank you for letting me speak, Chairman.
Mayor Johnson?
My understanding is a little different as to how it works. As I understand it, we're setting the levy at $2,617,386 saying, or $386, that that's what we need. It's irrelevant to us whether the assessed value goes up or the rate goes up or down. We're saying that we need that amount of money. So if the assessed value goes down, then the rate has to go up. If the assessed value goes up, then the rate goes down. We're just still getting $2,617,386 regardless.
Is that true?
Fundamentally, that is correct, yes. If it does go above, we are capped at 5%. So if, you know, we can't go above that 5%. So if... The mayor is correct, you know, if to get us to $2.617 million, if the rate falls to .3, then that's fine. It is... Yeah, you are correct. That is what we're levying. The rate itself is somewhat immaterial to the actual discussion. Additionally, if you think about it, if we levy the exact same amount that we did last year, the city itself is going to get less, because the police pension fund is going to get more, IMRF is going to cost more, FICA, well, it's the same, but salaries are going to go up. So while we may still get the same amount of money in actual dollars, the actual value to the city is going to be significantly less due to these other components of the tax levy. Their requirements are rising as well.
I notice...
Yes?
You mentioned the police pension fund is going to need more money. But we will be using the red light income...
No, that's not...
For that in the future.
That is not discussed right now on this. We're trying to do that. We have not talked about the police pension, how it's going to be funded down the line. So that is not a topic to bring up tonight.
I will not discuss it at this time, but my position is that...
Because we don't have it installed, so you can't discuss that.
All right, sir, I will bow to your wishes. I just think, though, that we could probably get by with the 2.4, and we don't need to raise taxes in the city. This is not the time in our economic history to put more squeeze on homeowners and property owners. Thank you.
Mr. Newville?
I'm looking at that graph you got. The city of Wooddale tax levy, where it shows...
What?
It's like the first or second page. Basically, the city's rate has gone down the past few years. Not a lot, but... That's not what we're voting on here, right? Just... Basically voting what the mayor was talking about, that $2.7 million, correct? Now, you're not setting a rate. If we vote tonight, oh, hey, I just voted from .36 to .5.
Correct. The rate itself is simply a function of the amount that we levy relative to the assessed valuation.
Okay.
Just the straight math on it.
Right, so we've been going down. It's just that it adjusts.
The evaluations have been going... Have been increasing faster than the 5% that we're legally allowed to tax that. So if it goes up... Last year, the assessed valuation went up 5%, and we only went up 4.1%. So the... That's why the rate dropped, because the housing, the values increased at a greater rate than our tax levy did. So just, you know, simple math, our rate decreased. So, yeah.
Any other comments? I have a motion on the floor. I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Polls?
Opposed.
Well, opposed. Motion carries. Items to be considered future meeting, six months revenue... Review of revenue and expenditure, special meeting December 18th. Red flag rule, January or February 2009. Water bill procedures update, January or February 2009. RFP for audit service, which we have to go out for bid for that. And I'll make... Any other items? Mr. Knight?
Yeah. I received a call from one of our constituents, Al Payak, who was forced out of his home during the flood. Has been living in Addison all that time. And called and says, "Why am I still paying my garbage bill when I haven't had garbage out there since the flood?" Now, I know Al and his family are one. I believe Dave is telling me he's still out, and a few others. I think it possibly, if we can get it on to next week's meeting, if we could somehow exclude the garbage pickups. He says the water in the sewer. He says, "Okay, that's, you know, fine." But as long as they're not putting any garbage out, he says, "Why am I paying for it?" I know, I realize it's a contract-type thing, but maybe it's something we could do to help these people. His house right now is kind of in limbo between the county and that.
I can maybe save us some time and give you a brief overview, about a one or two-minute summary of my conversation with Mr. Payak and Allied Waste. I did call Allied Waste, and I inquired about this. And since the city is locked into a contract for waste service removal with Allied, they charge us on a household basis, and that number's locked in. And then we... The residents pay us, and then we use that money to pay Allied. So the only way around that would be to have the city then pay for individual residents who are not putting their garbage curbside anymore. We would end up paying then.
Well, it's not that much. He says it's under $20 per month or so. I would suggest that the city look, and we... I think we could pick that up.
We can...
There's... Good.
We can put something like that on the agenda and talk about if the council wants to do that. I'm just saying that we can't do it with Allied Waste. We'd have to have our own sort of program.
If we could do the add-in and possibly for discussion, then...
Mayor, do you care to comment on that, or?
You know, Mr. Douthwaite was of the opinion he could handle that administratively, that we could cover that cost. Now, that was before Mr. Murma's head is discussing with Allied Waste, but we may be able to handle that internally.
So we don't need to put it out for discussion?
Well, you should let staff make that decision at a future date. I think it's been resolved.
Okay. Yeah, I'd like to know the results of it, because I'd like... I need to contact Mr. Payak again.
So are we going to have the staff then do that, Mayor, and get back Mr. Knight by now? Okay. Is that fine? Any other items to be considered under future meeting? I obtain a motion to adjourn.
Some of...
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Public Health and Safety and Judicial Committee, we call to order. We have Mr. Winger just came in, and everybody else is still here. Approved the minutes of meeting of November 13th, 2008. Do I hear?
I move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Recommend... Report and recommendation amendment to vehicle seizure ordinance. This is on our ordinance that through... Courts have decided that, and also Wooddale has decided, because of the cost of towing these cars and the safekeeping of these cars, and the courts, Illinois courts, have changed the rules. We can... Above, below list offenses of 15 more items to our ordinance. And what I'd like to do is make an amendment to the ordinance, Chapter 15 and Article 18. The city's Code of Administration tow ordinance. And what I'd like to make an addition to it... Chief's got something to say?
I just prepared for you to review a chronology of where we're at with this ordinance since we've instituted in 2005. And also with regards to my recommendation, besides the proposed ordinance change itself, you'll also see that I have a vehicle seizure report from the institution of this program in 2005 to the present. We're looking to increase the scope of this ordinance by about another 15 violations, which are listed there. We've also made to made some amendments to our procedures, which, when you look at the record of what we've been doing with this, shows that there's been a decrease. And that's to accommodate certain restrictions the courts have placed on us with regards to this. This is a strather straightforward request. As you can see, we're looking at fleeing and eluding reckless driving, aggravated assault, aggravated battery. The big one that we've been experiencing is retail theft, where a car is actually used in the commission of a retail theft. And that will actually let us hold that vehicle during that investigation and then put the burden back to the arrestee for the costs that are associated with that. Also, kind of on the negative side here, we've had several prostitution arrests. We have seized vehicles pursuant to Article 36 for that. This will actually give us the right to do this in-house and have the costs that are recovered for that vehicle and holding it, and the investigation of that crime then put back on the defendant, and would benefit the city of Wooddale. Lastly, zero tolerance. We're quite aggressive with our DUI enforcement here in Wooddale. However, when we do have people that are underneath the age of 21 that are drinking, that are outside the DUI, but within the zero tolerance, we'll be treating them in a like position. Once again, the police department and staff is strongly recommending that we broaden the scope of this. It's been highly successful. It's been helping us offset the cost of our police services to people that aren't playing by the rules. And we're looking to get this amendment approved so that we can include it in our arsenal for law enforcement.
I just have one question. The aggravated battery and all that, is that if the car is moving or on a private property?
It's used if that's used in the commission of the crime to either get away from the scene. Once again, when we come on somebody that we arrest for this and we are investigating this, we have to take custody of the car. But keep in mind that if there is a third party that's at the scene, or if the owner is, or the arrestee is able to get somebody there in a reasonable amount of time, we turn the car over to them. And the courts have said that that's what we have to do.
So this ain't just evidence of housing...
No, no. Not, not...
That's what I'm thinking here, that someone may have had it.
No. This is if the vehicle is used in the commission of the crime. Quite often, we'll have somebody that commits a aggravated battery, flees the scene, and then we take them into custody, and they've used that car to leave the area where the battery's in. That's where we would take possession of it.
Hello, I'm sorry.
All right, Mr. Knight?
Just to refresh, this is only... These fines are only imposed if they're found guilty?
We do this through an administrative hearing. The preponderance of the burden is on the proof of the city to prove that this, that number one, the person was arrested for this particular crime, and number two, that there was a vehicle involved with this. Those are the two things that we have to prove. And if we can prove that, then we will be successful before the hearing officer.
Anybody else? Lewitan?
I'd like some clarification on what happens. Somebody is arrested for reckless driving. The car is impounded. We have a pound?
No. We use a third party for that. You have to put up a bond, though, to get the car back.
Is there... Does this come under any of the forfeiture provisions of the Illinois laws?
No, it does not. That's Article 36, which is an asset seizure with regards to a forcible felony. And then the other seizure would be under narcotics forfeiture. This is above and beyond that.
I want to make sure I understand. Person pleads guilty to reckless driving, pays a $500 fine, court costs. Does he get his car back?
That has nothing to do with this.
We've impounded the car. He has to pay a fee to...
We are charged with the safekeeping of the car. We are charged to make sure that the vehicle is not on the roadway. We have to have people that are associated with this to make sure that we take care of the safekeeping of this person until we can turn it over to our third-party holder.
My question is, how does the car go from the third-party holder back to the owner?
They go get it.
Okay, during... Okay, so none of this comes under forfeiture laws?
No, not at all.
During the time it's under a third-party's control, who's responsible for the garage keeper's liability? And who... And what guarantee is there that there's no loss of property from the vehicle?
Dad would be the third party, and when they are approved as a tow vendor for us, they have to provide us with the insurance qualifications for that.
The city in no way is liable?
No, they are not.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions? All right, I would... Mr. Knight?
Did you already make your motion?
No, I'm going to make a motion.
I'm sorry, I thought you did.
I'd like to make a motion to... For an amendment to city code administrative tow ordinance, Chapter 15, Article 18, for the... for the addition of the 15 items, which we all have read. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?